Good evening and welcome to the work session business meeting of January 4th, the first one of 2024. Please rise and we are being led by the Middle School Student Council in the pledge. Very nice. All right, it's good. We had an encore performance. No, it is nice.
It's a public audience.
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to open it up for public comments, but since there's no public here, I'm going to assume that there are no comments. So we're going to move to the consent agenda. Item number one, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve consent agenda items two through four.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Bellino?
Tonight's consent agenda includes approval of the previous meeting minutes, an updated 2324 substitute listing, and some additional work hours for various staff members.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. We're going to move to reports and we're going to start with the student representatives so that they can say everything that Dr. Luft has on his paper.
We actually don't have a student report today because I feel like our last meeting was like, nothing really happened since then, so we actually don't have one.
Okay. Well, you had off.
Yeah.
Did you have a nice, calm vacation?
Yeah.
That was good. Do you feel rested? Always good to come back rested. I saw that there were tryouts today from three to seven, so there was nobody in there when I went by. I was hoping to catch somebody singing. Did they have a good turnout?
Yeah, that's where Charlie and I just came from, rent auditions. Yeah, I think it went really well. It's always exciting to see new people audition, but it's pretty much like the same group of theater kids that were there today.
Good.
Yeah.
That was the question I was going to ask. Was there any new students? New faces? Maybe some freshmen?
Yeah. It's always exciting to see like, people that you've never seen before, or you've seen around the hallways and you're like, oh, they're theater kids. So, yeah.
Well, and every year at the play, there's somebody in it that I have not seen in a play before, which is always kind of nice. Or several people sometimes, doing all new things that they'd never done before, tapping and doing other things. So, it was great. Okay, well, good. I'm looking forward to it. All right, Dr. Luft, they didn't steal your thunder.
I mean, to their point, there wasn't a lot of thunder to steal. Since we were on break in between this meeting and the last one. But I did want to start by saying happy holidays and happy new years to everyone. I hope everybody took some time over the break to rest, relax, and to rejuvenate already for the push through the very cold winter. Tonight really marks the kickoff for what is our budget season. So we'll give sort of a budget, initial budget presentation this evening, and then that'll be followed by more detailed presentations throughout the winter. We actually received very exciting news right before the holiday break. We were informed by the Garrison School District that 13 of their 22 current eighth graders have selected Putnam Valley High School as their school of choice. So for those who don't know, Garrison students attend school there K through eight. They have a choice between three high schools, O'Neill, Haldane, and recently, Putnam Valley. And this is only our second class of eighth graders who have an opportunity to choose Putnam Valley, and 13 of the 22 selected Putnam Valley as their high school of choice. So we know that a couple of those students also applied for private schools, but we have a pretty, we're pretty impressed with the turnout. And again, a huge kudos to our, some of our staff members who present to both the students and to the parents, as well as our members of our Big Buddies program who show our students around or allow the students to shadow them throughout the school day. So I know that goes a long way, and we always receive rave reviews for what we do to give Garrison students a sense of what it's like to spend a day in Putnam Valley High School. So thank you to everyone. I got to attend right before the holiday break, the elementary school sing-along. It's the first year, Dr. Podesta reminded us, the first time in three years that we've actually had it prior to the holidays. Last year was delayed because of a weather event. The year before, the two years before that was canceled because of COVID. So it was really impressive to see nearly 600 students belting out songs in unison, all in our auditorium. So it's a wonderful event, and again, congratulations to all those who make it possible. And our band concerts took place, band and chorus middle school concerts took place right up to the break as well. Our science research students are currently finishing up their research papers, and I know that next week they have their practice for the JSHS. That's, January 11th is their practice at the high school library. And Barbara, myself, and some others, Janina was there, had the opportunity to work with some of the fourth grade students as they did their alpellet dissection. You guys remember that?
Yeah.
So it was actually really funny. Everyone's so grossed out, they can't even consider it as Ms. Ross is demoing what it'll look like, and five minutes later, every single kid is all up in there dissecting alpellets. So they get over it pretty quickly, and they're always impressed by what they can find. So I know that Ms. Palmer is going to talk more about that as well. Winter sports season is well underway. Our girls' basketball team, our varsity team just finished. Actually, they won against Croton, and our JV girls' team is currently playing right now. And some upcoming events, we have next week, the high school chorus concert on January 10th, high school science research practice night on January 11th, elementary school literacy parent night, and the high school band concert, January 17th. Our next board meeting is scheduled for January 18th. And during that meeting, we will recognize Eduardo Rosinos, the 2023 Heart of a Giant Award winner. So our initial plan was to honor Eduardo this evening, and he informed us that he has a, he's already booked this evening. He's got a Zoom call with Daniel Jones, the quarterback from the New York Giants. So I told him, his parents, that he may need a booking agent if he's now booking calls with the starting quarterback of the New York Giants. But, so obviously, Daniel Jones trumped me, and in fact, all of you. So Eduardo will be here for the next board meeting where we're going to recognize him for his honors. And that's it. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, so our presentations this evening, we're going to start with our 2024-25 budget presentation. Dr. Luft and Jill Figarella.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It's been 30 seconds since you last heard from me. Hope everyone's doing well. As I mentioned before, this evening really marks the kickoff for what is our budget development sessions. And I do want to begin acknowledging that while I will be introducing this presentation this evening, really Jill Figarella, our business official, does a lion's share of this work, and will be talking through all of the details of our budget. As we do each year, while our budget presentation season officially kicks off this evening, this has really been in the works since the opening of school this year. Jill and I meet frequently. In fact, yesterday, we spent six hours in a conference room going through budgeting spreadsheets, looking at our long-range planning, really looking through the information that drives the presentation you'll see this evening, as well as the ones you'll see throughout the remainder of the budget season. Our next presentation will be January 18th. A few years ago, we stopped doing individual building presentations and shifted to a curriculum instruction presentation. So that will be facilitated by Ms. Levine, along with help of her administrative colleagues in the buildings. February 1st will be athletics and technology presentations, the 15th facilities and special education, so Dr. Doherty, along with Ms. Estrella, will be presenting on that. And then March 5th is our anticipated time, the first time where we'll go through the entire budget. 21st is an opportunity for us to continue those discussions, and April 11th is the deadline for adoption. As we do each year, building a budget is always a balancing act between several conditions. One of those is organizational, where we have to ensure that our budget is built in a way that supports our programs, our staffs, and our beliefs. We actually have, we obviously have many financial or fiscal constraints we have to consider, including our tax, the amount of state aid we receive, the allowable tax cap, our contractual obligations, policies, mandates, and reserves. And obviously, there's environmental factors, many of which are outside of our control, including inflation, the house and market, student needs, and income levels. So really, all of those variables come into play when we're trying to decide on how to best present a budget that recognizes our community's financial burden, as well as supporting the students here in Putnam Valley. Those priorities throughout the budget are broken into three categories, the first being instructional. So our instructional budget includes all of our program, our staffing, and the benefits associated with that. Non-instructional is the upkeep of our buildings, the health and safety, security, transportation, all of the other things that make instruction possible. And then revenue comes in in a variety of forms, including our tax levy, our state aid, and a growing revenue source is tuition, which we receive primarily from Garrison. Just a little more detail as to what goes into those. Our instructional budget, as I mentioned before, covers all of our instructional staff, teachers and support staff, our employee contracts. So we last couple of years have settled our CSEA and our teachers' union contracts. Healthcare and benefits are a huge piece of that, our pension costs, and obviously, all that goes into maintaining our instructional programs, supplies, materials, professional development. Non-instructional, again, we always say, we have staff that helps support our buildings. We have facilities and operations. We have, again, employment contracts that cover those individuals, benefits, health, the costs that go into maintaining our buildings, capital improvements that are needed, and some long-range planning. Revenue sources, we spoke a little bit about foundation and other state aids. So other state aids include aids, building aid, BOSI's aid, transportation aid, other forms of aid which are based upon our expenses. So the prior year's expense, we receive a portion of that back in aid the following year. Grant funds, tuition primarily from Garrison, and what's our allowable tax levy. We also have to balance the ever-increasing state mandates. So these include state testing requirements, the EV bus mandate that's upcoming, data reporting and compliance, E and L and bilingual services, special education services. They now changed the age-out limit for special education services to 22. So while most years we have students who age out at 21, as new students enter those specialized programs, this year, we won't have any students leaving because those students who are currently 21, who would typically be aging out, are now allowed to stay for an extra year. So it's an extra year of tuition payments for the district to get those students through the year in which they turn 22. Vendor contracts, obviously inflation and other factors that are outside of our control lead to things like increases in transportation, software and programs, utility costs, refuse to waste disposal, and obviously, our BOSI's expenses. And as always, the community's support is vital to us. So again, tonight is really the kickoff for what will be lots of information sharing to the community. Hopefully, we have some community members that come attend the board meetings. We'll hold community information sessions like we do each year to offer small group opportunities for individuals to ask questions about budget development or any specific questions they have. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Figarella, who's going to talk through some of the numbers.
Good evening. How's everybody? Yep, I'm going to share some of the financial information with you, and factors that went into our budget, and go into our budget every year. And these, some of the ones I'm going to mention right now are the, you know, the biggest driving factors that change our budget to budget every year. And first, we're going to talk about pension rates. We have this year, the employees' retirement system, which covers our staff, our non-instructional staff. Their pension rates are increasing about 2.1%. I can go over, you know, the dollar amounts with you. That equates to about $260,000 in expense. The TRS, which is the teachers' retirement system, they're actually decreasing their percent rate as far as the contributions go. So that's going to save us about $45,000. You know, it's all based on investing and what they feel is necessary and needed to fund their pensions that they're paying out. The payroll taxes, those are static. Always the FICA and Medicare taxes on payroll are 7.65% of our salaries. That's going to cost about an extra $145,000 this year, based on our salaries that are budgeted. Our transportation contract we have in place right now is the same one that we've had in place. We have two more years left on that, and there's a 2% increase on that with something negotiated, you know, within the last five years. That'll probably equate to an additional $50,000. It all depends on, you know, who ends up doing the transportation, the district or the contractor. Because in our case, we all know that we run a hybrid system, but right now, you know, between getting drivers, not getting drivers, it can go either way. Maybe the district expense or the contractor. Vendor contracts, again, going up about 2% based on inflation. We're going to see probably a good $100,000 increase there. BOSI's, we're looking at a 3% increase. They have not officially, they've adopted their, they've adopted a budget, but I should say they haven't adopted it, preliminarily adopted it, but it hasn't been adopted for a final adoption yet. We're waiting on that. So we don't have final cost on that. Added district tuitions, again, to go over that, we may be experiencing some higher numbers there with students. So we're looking at possibly a 5% increase in tuitions. And our health insurance premiums. So last year, we talked about how the health insurance premiums for all employees were rising, and not just here, it's everywhere. But it did go up 8% last year. We're going to have a 5% increase this year, and that's part of the consortium. We are part of a 14-district self-insured consortium plan through Putnam, Northern Westchester, BOSI's, and we all participate in that and, you know, are seeing the same increase. In other words, whoever belongs to that district-wise, 14 districts are seeing the same 5% increase. The transfer to capital that you see there is actually, there's an even, you'll see, it's going into expenses, $850,000, and you'll see the same amount coming in from our debt service. So that's kind of like, it raises the amount of the budget, but it also comes in as revenue from another, from one of our reserves to cover. So that isn't like an additional expense. We've already collected that money. Our contract salary increases, we, the newly negotiated contracts that we have for all employees, teachers, non-teaching, administration, so forth, equates to about 5.8% increase. Our revenues overall, our allowable tax levy limit this year, we're looking at 2.38%. Of course, that's preliminary. Nothing is finalized yet. We're still waiting for state aid to give, we have our state aid, some of our state aid figures, but the building aid is a driving factor in that calculation, and we don't have that final number yet. So last year, that was, I believe, 2.45. So it did go down slightly, or 2.38. The state aid itself, we're looking at a 2.7% increase, or about $300,000. Again, not finalized, could change, up or down, not sure. We won't know that final number until April. We should get better numbers in January. So, you know, it's an ongoing, it's a work in progress, ongoing thing. Grant funds, they, I just figured I'd mention there, that American Recovery Act and all of the COVID funds that we were getting, they're exhausted, they're done, they're accounted for. We're collecting them. We applied for everything. We received, we didn't receive all of it yet, but we're receiving everything that was earmarked to come to our district. The transfer, again, I went over the transfer, that's just a wash between the expenses and the revenue. I've also mentioned there that we need to talk this year about capital infrastructure needs, reserves, and future planning. Our capital reserve that we established was about nine years ago. That's going to be expiring soon, and I'll talk about that in the next slide. And so I also wanted to mention, while there are salary savings with retirements, post-employment benefits definitely contribute to our cost increases in health premiums especially. About 33% of our health premiums are related to post-employment benefits. I thought that was important to mention. Okay, so we'll go forward with, so the capital reserve that we established, I think it was 2015-16. So in 2025, that capital reserve will no longer be, we will no longer be able to add to that. So, right, it'll be static. It'll be, you know, whatever's in there at the time can remain in there. The money doesn't go anywhere else. It stays in there. And we use that first, let's say. But the, if you remember, I don't know if you do, when we established it and voted on it, it was 10 years, up to $10 million we could accumulate in there over 10 years. The balance in there right now is only $2.2 million. We didn't accumulate too much more than that. We used $610,000 towards our last capital project. So again, the balance is 2.289 right now, and that will stay in there. What we need to do in order to have that tool to work with again is to create a new capital reserve, and that will just, it'll be like Capital Reserve II. It'll be the second one. So we'd like to establish that, and I'd like to put that on the ballot as a proposition in May when we go out. That'll be a separate proposition. It needs to be reestablished.
Jill, I think for the public certification, you need to explain why.
Yep, I'm going to go into that now.
Okay, 2. something million is there, and now we're asking for more.
Absolutely. We're not asking for more money. What we're asking for is to establish a place to put remaining appropriations at the end of a school year to keep the reserve in good, for good reason, all right? We create a tax-neutral tool this way for predictable financing of future capital projects. We create continuity in an overall predictable debt level for our budget every year. So when we know we have monies saved from a prior year's budget, we're not just putting it into an unrestricted fund that could be spent on anything. It has to specifically be spent and voted on to use. So it cannot be put into that reserve without being voted on. You can't remove it from there without voting on it and using it towards a specific project.
So, just to add it to that, so every dollar that goes into this capital reserve can, one, only be used for capital expenditures, and, two, could only be accessed after receiving voter approval. So for every dollar that's in there, that's one less dollar that we have to maybe bond out for, in which case, we're paying interest on that over a 15-year period. So this would be like paying cash, part of your car in cash and financing what's left.
I understand that. The confusing part will be, well, you have an existing capital fund. What is restricting us from, because it was voted to exist only 10 years?
Correct.
Okay, that's the bottom line.
That's state law.
That's what people need to understand.
That one's essentially frozen and pointed in time.
Right.
And we just need to start a new one, so we can continue to contribute dollars.
That was the point, I think, that may have brought some confusion.
10 years is the state law for that? And, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to ask a question. The funds that are left in that account once it's frozen, they will remain there, and we will still be able to vote them out if we need to.
For the same purposes, correct.
But we will not be transferring those funds into the new account?
No, it cannot be.
Okay, very good.
Nope.
Thank you.
And it doesn't matter how long it takes to use it, but we just need to, we can't accumulate, we couldn't accumulate any more than 10 million, and we never even got anywhere near that, obviously. It's just, it's just the way that the rule works for that particular reserve.
I was going to say.
And just to correct the terminology, it's not the capital fund, it's a capital reserve. Those are two separate things. Okay, so if you need more on that, I can give you more on that. But, go ahead. Sorry.
So, with the existing fund, it's maxed out by years, which means no other monies can be added to that. And that's why we need to, that needs to be very clear to the public, right?
Yes.
That there are laws preventing us from using that piggy bank anymore. We need to open a new piggy bank.
I was going to say, if you want to ask the right question, it's why is it 10 year?
Yeah.
What is the point? If you could just open a new one every 10 years, why not just allow you to keep the existing one open?
I agree.
But I don't know that answer. To Jill's point, it's the rules.
It'll be beneficial to Sam's point to make to the public very clear what that reserve does for us.
Right.
When it's needed, and how it does not impact the taxpayer.
And how it benefits the taxpayer.
Yeah.
Right, and how it, right.
Okay, there's a huge benefit from it because what it does is, it keeps us from having to finance a project to the extent that we may have to, depending on the cost, obviously. And once we use that money towards the project, none of that becomes, you know, financed, and we save money in the long run, so.
Good. Thank you.
So, and again, it allows us to modernize and keeps us the ability to maintain the buildings and grounds and help retain property values in town. In turn, the board can remain focused on program and staffing instead of worrying every year about, you know, where are we getting the money to do the next capital improvement? What are we going to have to do next? What's the big pot of money that we're going to have to raise? We can't ask taxpayers for more, all, like, you know, it becomes like a windfall situation where we can try to stretch it out, right? The current capital reserve has reached its maximum term of 10 years, and while the existing funds will remain, in order to continue to build reserve funding, the district must establish a second capital reserve. So again, it'll be on the proposition as what I'm proposing is up to 10 million for 10 years.
Yep, makes sense.
Okay, so now I'm going to go over exactly how we calculate the tax cap, because I know we talk about it every year, and no matter how many times we talk about it and review it, it's still, you know, it's something you don't, you don't want to remember, so you don't. So I'd like to review how.
You guys make sure you have your calculators out, because next meeting, we're going to ask you to explain the tax cap.
Here we go. Okay. So, it starts with the prior year's tax levy. We take last year's tax levy. This is all formula-driven, right? I don't make up the rules. It's a formula that New York State gives us. Then there's an allowable tax growth factor, right? So that allowable tax growth factor is different for every school district, and it measures the quantity change in the amount of locally assessed taxable real property. And ours is 1.0052, and that equates to $209,560. So we have to add that to the prior year's tax levy. Then we have to remove the debt expenses that we paid out last year for all of our principal and interest payments, less the aid that we received. So a lot of times, you'll hear that called the local share. So whatever our local share is for last year, we're allowed to subtract from that number. And then we're allowed to add the CPI, in other words, inflation. But, the but is, we can only go to 2%. We can only add 2%. If the inflation rate is 4% or 6% or 8% or 3%, it's still only 2%. So we get to add 2%, which in our, in this situation, is $786,930. And then that leaves us, okay, so now our tax cap, they call this the tax cap before exclusions. So up until this point now, we're up to $40,133,414. Removing our exclusions, which would be any capital expense, debt expense, principal interest payments, local share that we have to add for this year's budget, we get to reduce that, I mean, add that to the number, $1,127,424. And if there were any pension amounts, like I mentioned earlier, that are over 2%, the law is that we get to add that to the, as an exclusion. Now, right now, the proposed rate is 2.1% for the ERS, for the employees' retirement system. There's no, there's no word that that's going to be the final rate, so they're not, they're not allowing us to build that into the formula right now. If that were to remain the rate, we'll probably get to add 0.1% to the, to this number. If not, if it goes down before they finalize it, then we'll get to add nothing. So that's why there's a zero there. And so preliminarily, our tax cap is at 2.38% or $41,268,38, and I believe it's 900 and 16. And I believe it's nine hundred and sixty thousand.
I just wanna, on this slide, point out the importance of maintaining a certain level of debt. So it's easy to see on this slide where, while you subtract this year's debt of one million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, you get to add back in, last year's debt, you have to add back in this year's debt. So just imagine, look at this formula and say, if we had no debt, of all your debt fell off and there was nothing to add back on the bottom, then our tax cap would be forty million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, which is actually less than what the previous year's tax cap was. So when, throughout the facilities committee meetings, and when that information is presented to the board, we'll continually talk about the importance of maintaining a stable level of debt. And in this formula, you see the importance of what you subtract at the top, if you don't have something to add back on the bottom.
Yeah.
That's gonna drastically impact your tax levy moving forward.
Right, right. So we talked about, you know, when that debt is coming off the schedule, what's the good timing for doing a capital project or adding, adding something to our facilities? Okay, so that is the formula. I probably won't go through it again unless you want me to next time, but that is how we get to what the allowable tax cap is.
Charlie said he's gonna do it next week.
Okay.
He took notes.
Can I ask one simple question? In number two, that number, who derives that number?
The one point zero zero five two comes from the state.
The half of one percent that we get through these.
The half of one percent, yeah. That comes from the real property tax, New York State Department of Real Property Tax in Albany. And every municipality, or every school district, I should say, is different.
Okay.
And on this chart, I was just showing history. So we have our allowable tax cap, how it's been since two thousand twenty-one, and this is supposed to be what we're looking, projecting for the future. So those numbers to the right of twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, to the right, are really guesses and projections based on information that we know. We do know some of it. We know salaries, we know certain things, we know approximately how much things are gonna go up, but we don't know all of the, so our intention, obviously, is to keep that under two percent when possible, right? Because that would be a good target, I believe.
Jill, am I correct in saying, like, the three years to the left where the tax levy is below two percent are years in which CPI was nearly zero?
Yes.
Right, coming out of COVID and interest rates were nearly zero. And then we saw inflation kick in and interest rates start to rise. And while CPI rose well above two percent, we're still limited to levying up to two percent, which is why twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five are, the allowable tax limit is above two percent.
That's correct.
That would be much higher if we weren't capped at two percent for CPI.
So, and here has been what our budget-to-budget change has been. So preliminarily, we're looking at a budget-to-budget for next year at three point three percent, which is quite lower than it was last year. But if you remember last year, we also had moved more money to capital fund and brought revenue in, similar to what I described earlier, the eight hundred and fifty coming in as revenue and the eight hundred and fifty being put into the budget as an expenditure. We had over two million in projects added last year and then also coming in as revenue. So the four point one six had, you know, was inflated by that, but it's still, I think the three point three three is a very conservative budget number right now. We have not gone through all the details of the budget and finalized every single number, but I'm pretty, I think we're pretty close to where that's gonna be, where we end up. So three point three three percent is our budget-to-budget change, but the tax levy change is two point three eight.
So I think that's a really important point to emphasize. The reason those budget-to-budget increases look so large is because we're transferring in money from our reserves to accomplish necessary work without needing to ask taxpayers for more money. So two of those years went to funding the high school roof, which is now complete. We're earmarking money for next school year to do other capital projects, which then, then do not become part of a larger facilities project, in which will require us to get voter approval for a bond to finance those projects. So it's something that Jill and I have been working on for the last couple of years, is finding necessary time-sensitive projects that need to be accomplished, that we're able to accomplish within our existing, using our existing reserves, as opposed to continually going out and asking for taxpayers to approve these projects.
So that is our history of that. I don't know if anyone else has any questions. Like I said, everything is really in the preliminary stages. We have met with all the departments, we have an idea of what everybody needs in their budget and for next year, and staffing as well, so we'll go over all of that next time. Or not really, when we do the final budget presentation, I can give you all of the numbers, but I think you're gonna hear from Jackie next time for curriculum and instruction for all three buildings, and then each of the departments. And as we go through all that, you'll have questions, and we can refer back to this and make changes to it as we need to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Jill.
I know, because there's never.
You guys have any questions?
No.
Okay, so we're gonna talk about the draft calendar for next year?
I got a quick question, Dr. Love. In the old days, they used to list the snow days, you know, how many would be appropriated for that year. I see that they're not here, you know, like it would say, three snow days for the calendar year. Instead, what you have are the days that will be eliminated if we have snow. Is that, that's how this will work?
Yeah, I mean, we could easily put it on there. Essentially, we're obligated to be in school for a hundred and eighty days.
Right.
So our calendar is built on a hundred and eighty-six days, which inherently means we have up to six closure days.
Okay.
So we don't necessarily spell out that there's six snow days, but one eighty-six minus six gets us back to our mandatory one eighty. So there's essentially six inclement weather days, or, you never know, logical days, wind days, we got a rain day already.
I know.
You never know.
That was the confusing thing, because I'm looking, April twenty-first, fourteen-fifty, and I'm thinking, okay, if we have a snow day, April twenty-first is removed.
No, no, no. So that would be your seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth.
That's, that's, maybe you should put it down, how many snow days?
I'm sure we could find a way to squeeze that in there somewhere in the text.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's it, yeah. So day seven would be the first time.
Because people may believe that if there's a snow day, you know, weather makeup days, oh my God, I'm gonna lose April twenty-first on the fourteenth and the fifteenth. And, you know, I don't think everybody knows that there's a hundred and eighty days that you have to be in session.
Okay, that's easy. We could do that.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so our calendar, our draft calendar is obviously based upon several drafts of the BOSIS calendar. There's a few differences, and I'll point those out, but for the most part, it's based on, very similar to what the BOSIS calendar is. It's also shared with both our PVFT and CSCEA union presidents, so they have an opportunity to inform on the school calendar. So they have both done so, and, which makes my life a little easier, they agreed on the days, the discretionary days. So hopefully that makes her, it's easier as well. So what I'm recommending for the board's consideration, and we'll vote on this next meeting, so we don't have to do it right now, but our superintendent's conference days are tentatively scheduled for Wednesday and Thursday, August twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. That's very consistent to what we've had over the past several years. The first day for students will be Tuesday, September third, following Labor Day weekend. Two days for Rosh Hashanah, Columbus Day in October, our typical superintendent's conference day on Election Day, November fifth, Veterans Day, the eleventh, and one of the discretionary days that our union presidents both agreed upon was the Wednesday before Thanksgiving as a school recess day. For Christmas and New Year's fall on a Wednesday, so that's actually a fairly long break. It'll be a week and three days during December, with the students coming back on a Thursday and Friday. We have Martin Luther King Day on the twentieth, and a new state-required holiday of Asian Lunar New Year, and that is, falls on January twenty-ninth. Our February break is the week of the seventeenth. We have a superintendent's conference day scheduled for March thirty-first. And then in April recess, from the fourteenth to another one of discretionary days, was the Monday after Easter, which falls on the twenty-first. Then Monday for Memorial Day, Juneteenth in June, and the last day of school is very late next year, is June twenty-seventh. So that brings us to a hundred and eighty-two student days for superintendent's conference days, which is the maximum amount the state will give us credit for, for a total of a hundred and eighty-six days. And to the point we made before, of those hundred and eighty-six, we're obligated to be in session for a hundred and eighty days. So there's six inclement weather days built into the schedule.
I love this calendar. I think it's awesome that you're giving off the students and the personnel that Wednesday before Thanksgiving. That is, that is really, it's something I always wished when I was here, that they would do, they never did.
So if we exceed the six built-in snow days, the first give-back day would be the Monday after Easter, the twenty-first, and then from there, it would go to the fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth, and the seventeenth as give-back days. In the event that there's no snow days, May twenty-third, which is the Friday before Memorial Day, and May twenty-seventh, which is the Tuesday after Memorial Day, would become recess periods. And in the event there's one school closure, the twenty-third, May twenty-third would become a school holiday. That's according to our contract agreement.
That's great.
Questions?
I just saw today, a district, I just got a thing from the LHCC, that somebody's writing to the governor about, you know, you keep adding holidays. We're limited. Students can't come before June, September first, and they can't go to school longer than the end of June. But, you know, you tell us we have to give these holidays in between, it's pushing us up against, you know, an immovable wall. It's making it very difficult for districts. Some, this district was just gonna go to school before Labor Day, and they won't get state aid for those days in order to get the number of days in, you know. So it is on the radar of Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association and the LHCC, and they're talking about it, because they don't feel it's, you know, you can make, it's not that they object to celebrating Lunar New Year, or Juneteenth, or whatever, it's that with the, with the sort of walls you have at the beginning and the end, it puts districts in a really tight bind, so.
So if it were the February break, would that be impacted at that point?
Right.
If they keep adding.
This state needs to either, you know, extend the school year, you know, into the first week of July, or start it, you know, the last week of August.
Well, that's what they wanted, they're asking, to give, like, the last two weeks of August, allow those to be aidable days.
Right, right.
So if students have to start before, they can, you know, so, but, we'll see what the state decides.
So how does this differ from BOSIS?
So BOSIS has, in their labor contracts, their staff is not allowed to start prior to September first.
Yeah.
So they cannot have the conference days in the end of August. So they essentially have two less days built into their calendar than we do. Those two days for BOSIS were taken out of the February break, I believe it was the twentieth and twenty-first of February, or regular instructional days for the BOSIS. Other than that, and BOSIS does not have the Wednesday before Thanksgiving off.
Now, are students are excused on those two days if they're in session and we're not?
Yes.
Okay. They wouldn't be penalized, correct?
Correct.
Right, good.
It's, and our calendar is much more aligned with what I've seen for other calendars in the region. Just about anyone who doesn't have that restriction regarding conference days in August has a calendar very similar to ours. Some districts are looking to do two weeks during the December break.
Wow.
Two full weeks, so that you would lose the Monday after spring recess, or the Monday after Easter, as well as the Wednesday before November. But there's really, everybody sort of has one or two days of discretionary where you want those days to float around. But other than that, everybody's pretty aligned with what the BOSIS calendar is.
What do the students think of the calendar?
They're not gonna be here.
They'll still be home from college by this time of year.
Is it better than what former calendars have been for you, you guys? Or about the same?
Honestly, personally, like, not to sound like uninformed or anything, but honest, I'm not really sure, because I don't think, students generally don't look at, like, the calendars as they appear, like, the year before or the year of. It usually just comes as, like, a month-by-month basis, so.
I gotta go tomorrow.
Live for the day, I like that.
I think that's just generally, like, the vibe of the student population, so, and like, that also applies for me, I think, personally, so there's not much of, like, anything outstanding that I see that we wouldn't regularly see, I guess.
I'm curious, what's your thought about two weeks at Christmas versus coming back that Thursday, Friday?
I think personally, that, oh, sorry, like, coming back the Thursday, Friday after Christmas, like, from like, my opinion, would probably be, like, it's nice, because you're off for a while, and then you're still getting, like, three days for Thanksgiving and an extra day after Easter, because, like, those are a lot of days that people tend to miss.
Yeah.
Like, I know that, like, a lot of people I know, like, I missed a day this week, like, a lot of people miss, like, the day after breaks, and like, when you give more days, like, if you're away for Easter and you're not gonna fly back on Easter, and you fly back the day after, you're not gonna miss school. Or if you, like, go away for Thanksgiving to see your family, like, you typically leave on, like, the Wednesday. And so, like, I feel like it's nice, because also you have, like, just a two-day, like, start back from winter break. Does that make sense?
Ease back into it. It's tough to come back after having two straight weeks off.
This has been a tough week.
I would not wanna come back, nope.
And we won't comment about how many empty parking spaces there were in the senior lot on the Friday before Christmas break.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Plausible deniability. Okay, so next, next meeting, we'll vote on it, is that?
Yeah, that's the plan. It's good. So if there's any comments during the week, or next two weeks, we'll update it, and then it'll be up for resolution next meeting.
Okay, then we're moving on to new business. Resolution number one, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Ciara Espinera to a four-month-long-term substitute position as a teacher at the elementary school effective January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, through May twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, or sooner, at the discretion of the Board of Education. At the substitute salary rate of one sixty per day, that's a hundred and sixty dollars per day, Ms. Espinera holds childhood ed one through six and early childhood ed B through two initial certifications.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I just wanna commend Ciara, this is her third or fourth leave replacement. She's accepted here in Putnam Valley, which has been a huge, to a huge benefit to our students, to have her here and offer some consistency. So I do know she would very much like a probationary teaching position, but I do appreciate her willingness to continually take leave replacements and her, sorry, long-term substitute roles, and her commitment to the students of Putnam Valley.
I see her, and she's just a taller nine than when she was in my class, but it's nice. She really knows the school and the students. I've watched her with students, and she's just, I don't know, always filled with joy, and it's nice that she's gonna be with us for a while. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Mary Ellen Jack to a six-month leave replacement position as a grade-six elementary teacher at the middle school, effective December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education, on step one BA of the PVFT. on step one BA of the PVFT salary schedule. Ms. Jack holds childhood education one through six initial certification.
Second.
Questions or comments?
So Mary Ellen has been with us for several weeks working as a long-term sub. She had just earned her credentials as a certified teacher, and that's for the reason why she's moving from a long-term sub position into a leave replacement position for the remainder of the school year.
Questions or, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Okay, I would open it up for public comment on any topic, but since the public is not Presentations at the upcoming meetings besides the budget?
'Tis the season for budget.
Okay. So that's it, the budget.
The budget.
Good.
Curriculum instruction is the next one.
Yeah, that'll be great. And I was glad to see a couple of student pictures in your, in your overview, but, you know, along with the computers and the pens, it was nice to see the students. Okay, um, board member comments. I thought first we'd talk about, because we talked about it at our last meeting, about the protocols. So, go ahead.
So, yeah, during our last meeting, I know Sam had voiced a concern regarding, almost conflicting language that was in the draft protocols regarding sort of supporting something, even if you may personally disagree with it. So I had offered to go back and to draft new language that I thought would, would honor what Sam's request was. So my proposed language is as follows. Board members may speak as individuals and share their personal beliefs during the comment portion of a public resolution. Once a resolution has been voted on, all board members will honor that decision and shall not undermine the will of the board. Board decisions are binding and final. So what the hope is, is it recognizes board members are in fact individuals, and everybody has their own individual opinion. The comment portion of a resolution is everyone's opportunity to share their personal beliefs, but once a resolution is voted on, the expectation is the entirety of the board will support and not undermine that decision. So I was trying to capture both the opportunity to speak as an individual, what your personal position is, while also recognizing that once a resolution is voted upon, the expectation is that it's supported by all.
What, what I would be very comfortable with would be, once a resolution has been voted on, no board member shall undermine the will of the board. Board decisions are binding and final. By saying that, that we will honor that decision, that's almost supporting that decision. And if I still disagree with it, I will still disagree with it, but I will not undermine it. You're possi, you're possible, possibly at the bottom, all majority-voted board decisions are binding on all board members, and all board members will undermine. That sums it up, I think even better. I like that possibly one, because there's no honor, there's no support. It's all majority-voted, board decisions are binding, and that's that. You know, we can speak our mind, but once that vote is done, it is done.
Okay, Jeanette and Crystal, you were part of this discussion, what do you?
Well, Jeanette had replied to the proposed language that Dr. Luft had shared. Do you wanna talk about that?
No, and I, I said I, I didn't have any issues with it. And Sam, my comment would be regarding undermining is, and you'll hear me say this a lot, is I would, I prefer more positive verbiage than negative, and I see undermining as a negative verbiage. So that would be my comment regarding undermining versus honor.
So what would be the opposite of undermine then? Uphold?
Oh, no, no. No, you, you.
But honoring a decision.
Uphold is supporting. What I'm saying is that.
But no, honoring a decision is not supporting. It's, it's saying, that decision's been made and I will honor it. It's not supporting. Honoring, this, it's not honor like we think of like, you know, like, like.
About will respect that decision. I prefer that. Will respect that decision and shall not undermine. Because that I could live with. I'll respect it.
I can live with respect, as long as a board member's not divisive.
Right.
Right, right.
So you're respecting it, right?
Well, I, I have had more arguments on previous boards throughout my life, many, many, but never were they divisive. We disagree, God bless you, that's fine. But, you know, don't ask me to support what you believe in, just like I'm not gonna ask you to support what I believe in, you know, and, and that, that's it. So, respect, yes, but not honor. You know, I, I think that's a better word, if everybody agrees.
I'm good with respect.
I'm good with respect.
I'm okay with that.
So I think the only other comment I received was, in the original language, there was a clause that spoke to unless the decision concerns an issue that has been vetted in executive session. So that's sort of the caveat to the first.
Oh, yes, yeah.
So I don't know whether we want to include that, or is that just a known that matters of executive session are not up for public disclosure?
I think that's why we took it out, because it was already stated in the.
It's already known. And, and that is true. You know, even in a new board, none of us here, you know, twenty years in the future, a whole new board, that's one of the, the caveats. You do not discuss what goes on in executive session. And that should cover it.
And that's the fear, right? You could be voting on a resolution that was discussed. I mean, they're so limited as to what can be discussed in executive session anyway.
Exactly, yeah.
But if one of those matters were to come up for resolution, if an individual board member shared their personal belief during the comment period, you would in essence be disclosing what was discussed during executive session.
Right, right. Right, and, and in that case, you, you, you do a straight vote, yes or no? That's it. Good. Yeah, so if we can substitute.
All right, so I have respect instead of honor, and we're gonna leave the executive session language out.
Yeah, I'm good with that. That's good, thank you. Thank you, everybody who, who helped on that. Thank you.
Great job, to your discussion.
Okay, thank you, both, Dr. Luft and Crystal and Jeanette. Okay, any other?
I wanted to just remind everybody that, Dr. Luft, correct me if I'm wrong, but as I was driving past the elementary school the other day, I saw kindergarten registration open, and I got very excited because I have a kindergartner coming into the school. And she is my last. And so I just wanna remind everybody out there that kindergarten registration is open, and if you don't have the number, you can probably find it online or drive past the elementary school, and it's right there for you. And please register early if you can. That helps us prepare so much more for the upcoming school year. My little plug, sorry.
Amen to that.
Talking for experience, right?
Are you first on the list?
I don't know if I made it, actually, but I'm calling tomorrow, so we'll see.
So, yeah, the, the district office was actually buzzing over the holiday recess. We received many new registrants across the grade levels. Families taking advantage of that break to move into the district and to register their children. So, we're all, all are welcome, as long as you're a resident of our school district. But, yeah, certainly better, the earlier is certainly better for us. It allows us to determine our staffing levels, classrooms, facility needs, all of, of the above. So certainly, we encourage you to come. We typically do our screenings during the February break, and take advantage of that.
Yes.
I, I'd like to compliment the elementary school on that sing-along. I was there this, right before the break. I move to tears every time I see close to, you know, six hundred kids sitting in a huge space that are so excited and so cute and, and so unbelievably moving. It was just outstanding, just outstanding. I mean, every time I go there, I get so nostalgic, and it was really, and kudos to Ms. Podesta who just goes, and those kids are quiet, and forget, start them up again, just going like that. It's like rolling thunder. I mean, Jackie, you were there, Dr. Luft, you were there, you, you know what I'm talking about. It was outstanding.
Yeah, Mrs. Calhoun does a nice job with them, so. Music is an important part.
Yes, it is, absolutely. Absolutely.
And it has always been very important in Putnam Valley, which I think we should all appreciate because it's not as important in some districts, so kudos to us.
Yep.
Okay, Jeanette, did you have anything?
Uh, no, I don't. Like I said, it's, I feel like I haven't been in town, so.
I know. Your new grandmother brain is not letting you.
Yeah, true.
Except other things. Okay, I have a couple. First of all, I wanna go back to the fourth-grade owl pellets. So Liz Bros, she and I have talked a couple of times about how disappointing it is that the fourth grade, it's not part of the fourth-grade curriculum, but she has all these owl pellets left over from fourth-grade classes before. And so she, she had a whole plan, they were gonna watch a video, and then they were gonna come in in groups of two classes at a time, but she needed more adults. When, when we did it in class, we did it over a period of maybe a month. We had like two hours. So there's a picture, there's pictures on the screen of the, of the kids, and they were, the teachers were there. When it was special time, the teachers left, and the specialists popped in and managed to not like go, hey, that's this guy, you know. So even Dr. Luft managed to not say anything. So the students sorted the bones in the cups. I got to take the cups home and, and regroup them because they were all piled up, but it was really fun to watch, and the students were great. They were inquisitive and curious and, well, I, I don't know, is this, is this a bone? It doesn't look like a bone. You know, these little toe bones that are like, just like little, almost like pieces of hair. Anyway, the last two classes that were in, Mrs. Galella's class and Mrs. Canoe's class, were writing their reflections when they finished. They, for some reason, by the end, either we got better or they, they couldn't, hadn't done it before, I can't understand, but it got shorter every time. So they had time to work on their reflections while they were there. So I asked both teachers to, to have students send me just a copy of what their reflections looked like. So I, I gave them to, copies of them, just because I think it's really important, I, I know we've asked for this, you know, years ago, I can remember Valerie Fitzgerald asking for this over and over, kind of like samples of what, what does a first grader's writing look like? What does a third grader or a fourth grader, and then a sixth grader or an eighth grader, so that you can see sort of the growth? I was so impressed by, I, I wrote back to each of these students and told them, well, thank you for sending me the, because they emailed me directly, sending me your reflections, but also how impressed I was in that I was gonna share them with the board. You know, really good language, good sentence structure, good paragraphing, good, you know, answering the question that was asked, using words that, you know, touch something that an animal regurgitated. I mean, it's like, I just, you know, they just, they just cracked me up. And I really liked looking at their reflections. They weren't necessarily, she didn't just pick like the best, these were just kids who were sitting there and said, oh, I'll send mine to Miss Farley, and so emailed them to me. So I, I wanted you to have that, and I had said to Jackie Levine later, or Dr. Luft had said to her, that I was coming to say, I, I really wanna see samples of student work because it, if I can't see the students, it, it gives me a placeholder as to where they are in terms of, of growth and progress. And so I was impressed by all of them. So I thank, so let's see, Ryan Byrd, Ryan Faraguzzi, who else? Allison Jimenez, Jack Matola, Lily O'Donnell, all, you know, so I, I really, I thank them for sending them to me and for sharing their work with me, and, and I hope to see more student work. I, I really, you know, when I look at this and then I, I look at some of the cast presentations or other presentations I kid, see kids do, I'd love to see some of their English compositions from the high school, you know, reflections. I mean, I, because that's, that's how I know growth is happening, how things are happening.
Sit them down next time.
No, I'm just, I just wanted to say.
That's excellent, Barbara. Thank you.
So, okay.
Thank you for sharing this part with us.
Yeah, really, really.
I will do that again if I, if I, whenever I get student work, I will. It's the same as having the students say the pledge, I just, lead us in the pledge. I just think that they're, they're the heart of what we do.
That's right.
If we don't, and it's a way of seeing them, you know, making them real to us.
Do you want me to read an excerpt of my favorite one?
Huh?
Want me to read an excerpt?
Yeah.
She loves me. Well, Lily ends hers, well, at one point she talks about how it was absolutely disgusting.
Yeah.
But then at the end, she said, it was actually pretty interesting. I never thought, this morning, as I was eating breakfast, that I would be picking through throw-up. Lily's very honest.
Welcome to the fourth grade.
I love her first one line, "I felt gross and weird, and Mrs. Galella told me I had to do it."
We were worried Mrs. Galella said, "I don't think I can stay for this." And you're like, "Oh, yes, you can. You'll be fine. Just don't get too close."
As, as I had mentioned earlier, when Ms. Bros was giving the overview and showing the video, and she had a document camera up there, he looked around the room, and there was kids turning green, like turning away. Fifteen minutes later, every kid in that room was like, with their hands, picking through it, touching their face, and like, ah.
He managed not to say that, Al.
They definitely all get into it. I saw one girl pull out, and I think was a Tyrannosaurus Rex skull. I'm like, where did you get that thing from? It was huge. After she was getting mounted above her mantle, she didn't think her parents were gonna be into that idea, but it was the biggest skull I had seen in the three days they were doing it.
And some of the kids were like, like, I had to like take this home, my mom's not gonna believe it. I said, like, what, like, explain what that means. She said, like, she's gonna be so jealous that I got to do this. And I said, well, look, if you Google owl pellets, there's a company you can order from, and you can order owl pellets.
I've heard there's one individual that has a monopoly on this market. I'm gonna research that, but I think there's one individual that produces all of the educational owl pellets.
There's somebody in the district.
Probably a millionaire.
Mrs. Bros said there's, there's a teacher or, or an employee, at least in the district, who has owls on his property and finds owl pellets. So the kids were talking about, but like, if you were walking through the woods and you see this brown.
Wow.
Like, you wouldn't pick it up, you would think that it, something had gone to the bathroom there, whatever. She's like, now I have to go into the woods and see if I, what I can find. I'm gonna order them for my mother for Christmas.
This might be adventure.
Anyway, it's nice to see them excited, even though it's not exactly part of their curriculum, that discovery and that learning and that asking questions and, and going outside your comfort zone, it's all part of what we want students to do.
To make you feel better, it used to be a part of the.
It did.
Fourth-grade.
Right.
Science twenty-one curriculum before it was changed.
Right.
And I, exactly what you witnessed, I used to see my students go through, how they were very reluctant at first, and then by the end, you could not get their faces to look up at you for anything that you would say, so it's a, it's a fun project.
That's why Mrs. Byer came in to help too, two of the days, because she's done it before too, so, you know, so, because Mrs. Bros said, I don't know how I'm gonna do this, just me and the teacher.
Very explicit.
We got you. I would like to compliment the fact that the board is getting invitations to all of these events.
Yes.
So I don't know if it's pressure, pressure, or they've just realized that we really wanna know and really wanna be invited and included, but I, I'm honestly honored and grateful that, that we're getting these invitations to concerts and the science research stuff and the literacy night, whatever, all of those things. So I appreciate that from the, whether it's from the building level or they're telling the coordinators of the clubs that you have to invite the board.
Now, the science research dry run next week, is that open to the public?
Yes.
So that's a great opportunity to see what our students do, the achievements that
they do.
Right, absolutely.
I invited, I mentioned to my husband, because he would understand it more than I would, so.
Well, I don't understand it at all, I just, I just stand in awe of the work that they've done. It's just really incredible.
Oh, on the eleventh, yep.
Yeah, so.
And Maureen?
And six-thirty is earlier. And 6:30, it's earlier.
Thank you for, for the calendar hookup with those invitations, that's a big help.
It helps so much, so thank you.
It does, it does, yep.
I feel like those were some of our goals, we're like, I'm gonna put big check.
Check, check.
Check, check. On the, every, I think everybody got in, a board members got an email dated January 2nd from Westchester Putnam, and I think it says a real treat. It's, um, the annual legislative forum, which you have to RSVP to just, you know, watch. But each of the New York State legislators, as well as board, boards of ed. and superintendents, are gonna talk about their, um, their budget goals and their educational goals. So like, you know, if you can watch it, it's 7 to 9 on the 3rd of February. But you have to RSVP in order to get the link, so, um, even if, if you think you might be able to maybe sit for an hour or half an hour, um, I would RSVP. We also got on the 3rd from Westchester Putnam under a smorgasbord of, I can't even read my own writing.
Smartness.
Smartness? Thank you. Um, community conversations, um, so Jeanette has, is gonna go and, and speak kind of like for Putnam Valley, um, but any board members can watch it and listen to what other boards are doing in terms of increasing board communication and making it better. I think it's a really, um, learn, good learning opportunity. Doesn't cost anything, you just have to sign up, so, look for those emails.
It's a Zoom call.
Huh? It's a Zoom call, yeah. I also saw, um, that the, that the LHEC is asking, um, the SED to reinstate the third-party review process for capital projects, which would be good for us, right? Because.
We learned today that the review cycle is up to 26 weeks and growing at the State Education Department, so. I'm a firm believer that they need to do something. It shouldn't take half a year for my project to get approved.
I agree.
By Architect's.
Especially if it's needed.
So I've just, so that you know, the, the, Westchester Putnam and the LHEC, both of which we are members of, um, are working to try to get those fixed. So just so you know, it's not, you know, we're not, we know it's a problem and they're working to get it done. So they sent a letter to Commissioner Rosa and, um, hopefully, you know, they will get some positive responses. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Excellent.
Anything else? Okay, then, uh, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Welcome to 2024.